If you would please rise for me to say the invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Harris.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this great day to be in Montgomery, Alabama. Lord, we just thank you for blessing us in so many different ways. Lord, just keep reminding us that you're in charge and we'll just get our due weight sometimes and let you do your will, we'll be so much better off.
That's right.
Lord, just ask you to be with each one of us, each one of the commissioners today. Lord, just help them make decisions that's gonna be in the best interest of our entire county. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in prayer. Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call roll Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Moore Ziegler. Commissioner Walker. Vice Chairman Sankey.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have comments from the citizens. Mr. Flynn, student Board of Counsel. If you'd come forward to the mic, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Flynn, you want to call me, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
You called me and you text me all weekend. You're excited about this, aren't you?
Yes, sir, I am, sir.
Well, I'm glad you're here. So, please speak into the mic so people in the listening out there can hear you.
So, I'm Najuan Flynn, a proud student of Robert E. Lee High School. I'm originally from Cook County and I have been in Montgomery since 2009. As Mr. Sankey explained, this program is called the Student Board of Counselors and I've already consulted with people who have encouraged me this program to be good for the youth. I've always been wanting to be a leader for every program I've joined. The president of FCC LA, I've been Montgomery County Sheriff's Office Program with Sheriff Cunningham here, and I'm the lieutenant for that program. And I just, I really, I really love the youth. Yes, we have our faults, yes, we have things that we're not doing correctly, but I think if we have more guidance, if we have more people of myself who are the youth in roles of leadership, so they can see they can achieve those goals that are said that they cannot do. It inspires them, it motivates them, it encourages them. And the whole purpose of this program is for the school board, the Student Board of Counsel consists of an executive, a legislative, and a judicial branch. And what we do is we help plan, we help plan activities in and outside of the school. We help kids. I've met many kids that feel comfortable talking with someone their age than talking to a elder, open age. And it, I wanted to be careful when I said that. And so, really, and truly honestly, guys, I really think that there are amazing leaders that are young, that are not able to show their leadership abilities, because there are not programs like this that give them the opportunity to work with their leaders of their community, of their states, of their cities. And I feel like this program does that. This program shows students that, hey, okay, there, that's a student. I'm not in college, I'm in high school. I go to Robert E. Lee High School. And I'm able to achieve a goal like this? If that don't encourage a student, I don't know what can. So, all I ask you guys is, as we go forward with this program, I want everyone's support. This program means a lot to me, it means a lot to a lot of the students, because this is a program where now, they can be heard. They can be heard and then we can voice their opinions to you all. Of course, you have to find decisions, but this now gives us the opportunity to say, okay, what's gonna happen in our schools? What can we change in our schools? What can we change in our communities? What can the youth change? Because we are the future leaders. So, why not start teaching us how to lead now, instead of waiting later on and then try to build all of that intelligence backup? Thank you all.
Hey, this young man, he called me this weekend and then texted me this weekend and I was impressed with him on the phone, but I'm blown away in person. Lee High School, and you're a junior.
I'm a junior, yes, sir.
And your SGA?
We did SGA, and there's a club called FCC LA. And I'm also one of the athletic trainers there, I'm also the drill commander for color guard, and of course, I'm the student assistant to the principal.
Yeah, so, you know, this young man, I mean, how do you get more impressive than this guy? And basically, what he's asking is to have more young people like you across all our high schools come together.
Yes, sir.
And he's gonna do all the organization on it.
Yes, sir.
He was asking for a place to meet, and City Hall is ideal, but I told him if the City Hall was not, then we would be glad to try to help him out some way. But I wanted him to come in and just kinda give his vision, it's a great vision. This guy's gonna be a leader here in Montgomery one day, we need to keep you here, and I'd vote for you.
Thank you, sir.
But anybody have any other questions?
No, I really, really would like to know more about your plans and the program and what all it includes. And if you need a place to meet, I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Yes, I thank you so much, sir.
It's a great program, it's, believe it or not, it's something, if you do this, you'll be doing, you will have done something that the adults haven't been able to do. We've talked, I know I've talked in groups about getting together a group to groom and identify groom and to mentor future leaders. It hasn't happened. So, you have all my best wishes and any support that I can give you, let me know, because that is absolutely something that we need. Kids, youth, listen to youth better than they do adults, and they know what they need and they know what's going on among them. It's great if you can get that together and I'll support you.
Mr. Flynn, when you get it organized, I want to come at least one meeting a month.
Okay.
I want to just put it on the calendar. If you have a meeting, I want to come at least once a month and just listen to y'all and take your ideas, and then I can bring it back to the commission and we want to say what you have on your mind.
Yes, sir.
And take your ideas and see if we can work with them.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Flynn, I'm excited about, you know, what you're saying. I'm a graduate of Robert E. Lee, and Commissioner Walker can speak for herself, she's a graduate as well. And both of us are members of the Robert E. Lee Hall of Fame. So, perhaps we might agree at some point with the leadership that he might come speak with the members of the Hall of Fame to just help. Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm gonna take it a step further. I didn't finish Robert E. Lee, I finished the great Jefferson Davis High School. So, but I'm gonna take it a step further. I am gonna pledge to help you as much as I can, and I'll tell you what, I'm gonna give you my card, reach out to me, because you know, I know when you meet like that, you need water, you need snacks, so I'll make sure, out of my own personal pocket, I'll make sure you have water and snacks for each one of your meetings.
That means a lot. Thank you all so much. And if you really want my support, you best be talking to the people at George Washington Carver High School. You guys have no idea how, you know, how soothing it is to know that we are, we're being heard. A lot of us act erratic, not because we don't have the management, not because we're being taught. Parents do a great job of teaching, but sometimes when you feel that you're not being heard as a youth and you're shut out and put to a corner because of the age, and it's insulting for us to, I've been told, you know, I'm a student, so I should stay in the student place, and that's insulting, because I have the intelligence, I have the mindset, I have the grind and the grit of an adult. And the way I feel is that anything you put your mind to, nothing can stop you from it if you're dedicated and you push to it.
Do you need a note for your excused absence from school today?
I told Dr. White, I think I'd be fine.
You tell him to call me if you got a problem.
Yes, sir, will do.
I'll tell him where you were. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st, 2023.
Move for approval.
Any objection? So ordered. I'm asleep at the wheel, Tammy, I'm sorry. Who had the second?
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider amendment number one to contract with outdoor obsessions to add locations.
Move for approval.
Any objection?
Consider professional services agreement with Heritage Health Solutions for inmate off-site healthcare billing management services.
Move for approval. Second. Any objection?
Consider inmate excess medical policy renewal.
Move for approval.
Any objection?
Consider a memorandum of understanding with the Alabama Department of Human Resources for the Montgomery County DHR building.
Move for approval. Second. Any objection?
Consider a memorandum of understanding between the Montgomery County Judge of Probate and the City of Montgomery for the administration of the upcoming 2023 City of Montgomery municipal elections.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection?
Commissioners, I just want to make one note on this one. There were two non-material changes to the contract that the city had sent over. They didn't affect the body of it or the intent of it, it was just two minor changes. I just want to let you know that before you vote.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the attorney? So ordered.
Consider funding of economic development projects.
Move for approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is the project that is listed for up to 25 million.
Yes.
My recommendation is that we change that from 25 to 10, in which case I would move to approve that.
Ms. Chan.
Yes, sir.
I want to just make a comment on that. I know most of us have been reading into the media, and we've been looking at, you know, various comments and so forth. And so, when we first started out long ago with this project, of course, we were on track to get it completed at a certain date and certain time, you know, within certain cause parameters, but of course, we've run into some budget challenges and so forth, and I know, you know, we did 10 million for this project some time ago, late last year, and the media is saying that we're not being transparent enough when it comes to this particular project. And so, you know, and I tend to agree with them, we could just say that we're trying to make sure the Whitewater project gets funded and completed. And so, I don't see any problem with, you know, saying that and being clear about that. And we had partners and so forth from the state that, we had discussed some things, we thought that we would have all the funding in place, but I understand that that may not be the case, depending on what the state does. And so, it concerns me that I'm not really sure at what point we'll come to an end when it comes to having adequate funding to see the project through. And so, while 10 seems a little bit less of a heartburn than 25, are you able to comment on just where we are and where we might be going from here?
Yes, the governor has put 25 million for economic development for Montgomery County in her budget. Now, it goes before the Senate and the legislature for their approval of the budget as being a part of the budget. I do have a meeting tomorrow with Senator Arthur Orr, he's chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, to help him understand the need for the money and where it's going to and how our partnership along with the city and the county, the city and the state is gonna continue to move this project forward and get it completed. So, we have a motion for...
My motion is to change, understanding the commitment that we have received for the 25, my motion is that we approve 10 million today.
I second the motion as amended.
Okay, yes, you're right. Commissioner Moore Ziegler had made a motion for the 25 million.
You amend it.
I amend my motion?
You made that motion, okay. So, we're gonna address that motion first. Commissioner Moore Ziegler made a motion for the 25 million, do I have a second?
Am I missing something?
I need to withdraw.
Can she amend that motion?
Or withdraw it?
You can amend it or withdraw it, or we'll vote on it.
Let's amend the motion.
Okay. State your...
I state, okay, saying that I want to amend the motion to include now 10 million dollars?
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion to amend to 10 million, we have a second on that motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
By raising your right hand, please signify. All opposed, likewise?
Alright, so you're moving.
So, we got four, one approved. So, now...
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay, so we're good. Okay.
You want to modify it, then we'll just go for it, we'll vote for it, but it's gonna be considered as modified.
I need a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's nothing, oh, I didn't know.
Any objection?
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of $6,000 from Commissioner Harris for the Jeff Davis Football Program, the addition of $500 from Commissioner Moore Ziegler for Martin Luther King, the Principal's Discretionary Fund, $700 from Commissioner Moore Ziegler for Carver for the ninth grade field day.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of the following, and please bear with me. From the additions from Commissioner Sankey of $1,500 for the South Hull District Association, $1,500 for the Brookview Neighborhood Association, from the joint designated revenue, $5,000 for the YMCA Rising Achievers, $50,000 for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office Foundation, $20,000 for KCS Ministries, $5,000 for the Rosa Parks Museum for the Juneteenth Program, $5,000 from Chairman Singleton for Easter Seals Vocational Rehab Program, $5,000 from Commissioner Moore Ziegler for the West Alabama Jubilee Association, $3,500 for the Delbert B. Madison II Foundation, and from Commissioner Harris, $2,500 for Montgomery Music and Arts Foundation, $10,000 for the Kappa Alpha Psi Foundation for the Guide Right Program, $4,000 for the ASU Foundation for Aspire. Is that all correct, please?
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection?
Consider a bid award for item number one to American Ultraviolet Company, and for item number two to Max Assure Inc. for mobile UVC disinfection units for the detention facility.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection?
Consider a bid award to Acme Supply to provide inmate uniforms for the detention and youth facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection?
Uh-oh, I hit move.
So ordered.
Second.
I hit it before you.
Did you?
I'm quick draw.
You want to take credit for that one?
Consider budget change request number eight for the Engineering Department.
Move for approval. Second. Any objection?
Consider position fill request for the Appraisal Department for two Appraiser twos.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection?
Consider position fill request for the Engineering Department for a County Road Equipment Operator Two and a County Road Equipment Operator Three.
So moved. Second. Any objection?
Consider a position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for a Deputy Sheriff Trainee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection?
Consider a position fill request for Support Services for a Maintenance Worker.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection?
Consider travel training requests for the County Commission, the Sheriff's Office, and Tax and Audit Department.
Move for approval. Second. Any objection?
Now, we have waived rule items to consider, consider a pay grade reclassification for the Detention Facility Director from the Administrative Pay Plan, Pay Grade A-12 to the Corrections Pay Plan, Grade PC-7, and Pay Grade Reclassification for the Juvenile Detention Compliance Officer from the Corrections Pay Plan, Pay Grade PC-4 to the Administrative Pay Plan, Pay Grade AO-9 for the Detention Facility and Youth Facility.
With no objections, I move for approval.
Second. Any objection?
Consider hiring an auto servicer at Pay Grade SO-6 Step 6 for the Sheriff's Office.
No objections, so moved. Any objection?
Consider proposed 2023 Legislative Agenda Item to repeal Section 10 of Act 789 relating to restrictions on where deputy district attorneys in the 15th Judicial Circuit may reside.
No objections, so moved.
Second.
Any objection?
I have one point of order, I just want to go back and, so we can clean this up, so it doesn't come back. Under Section B, under motions and the rules of procedure, under Paragraph 6, it states that motions to substitute or amend a motion are used to make changes or revisions. Such motions are made only after the original motion has received a second, but prior to the adoption of the original motion. Okay? If the motion to substitute or amend is approved, the commission then must take a second vote to approve the motion as substituted or amended, as the case may be. So, the procedure that we used, the intent was there, but I think the carrying out of it was not proper. Okay? You made a motion, Commissioner Moore Ziegler, it was never seconded before we did the motion to substitute or amend. Okay? But, what I would like for you to do, to make this, to clean this up, is I think that the vote that we made was improper. Okay? So, in order to go back and clean this up, I think a motion to amend, excuse me, you didn't make a motion to amend, you made a motion to amend, but it was before a second was made. So, what I would like for you to do is just to go back, instead of doing a motion to amend, I would like you to make a motion to carry out your intent, which I believe was to designate $10 million to economic development. So, if you'll do that, we get a proper second and a vote, we won't need a motion to amend, because your first motion did not have a second.
Okay, so I need to make, so I make a amend?
No, you do not, no, no. You make a motion to designate $10 million to economic development.
Okay, and you saying 10 million, I was about to say 30 million. Okay. I make a motion to designate $10 million to economic development.
I second the motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Four to one, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I think I've said enough now.
Deputy Administrator?
No, sir.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, everybody. Again, I want to congratulate those deputies that are taking that extra step toward professionalism and participating in the achievement program. Sheriff, you really have done all that you can do since I've been here, and I've noticed, to make sure that you, your force is really a professional.
noticed, to make sure that you, your force is really a professional one, trained in every area that's available for them to get training in, and that really raises the bar for other law enforcement agencies around here. But kudos to you for your leadership in that capacity, and congratulations to all of them. Young man, what's your name? I, I, I miss your name. What's your name?
Nodjwan Flynn.
Nodjwan.
Nodjwan, Nodjwan. Nodjwan, I wish you all the success, and like I said, if there's anything that I can do, let me know. I'll give you my contact information, so you can call me, and if I can help you in getting that thing organized out, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler?
Um, I just want to say, I am so happy and proud to be sitting here at the County Commission every day to work with these wonderful people that sit next to me, to make Montgomery great. And I hats off, I think I'm the, am I the only person that lives in the county, the only county commissioner that you actually, when, when anything goes down, I have to call you, and I have had to call you.
Doug has to call him.
Doug, Doug, are you in the county?
Well, and Isaiah has a little bit, too.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just a little bit.
But doesn't live in the county.
No, I live, I actually live there.
Oh, I do, yeah.
My house is there.
Oh, you actually live, I live in Pike Road, so...
But you called Derek.
Yeah, yeah, you, and you keep saying you live in Pike Road, I mean, okay.
Well, I live in the town of Pike Road, yeah.
Okay, but again, thank you, thank you, Sheriff, for what you do. Thank you for, for Montgomery County.
He is my, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, thank you again for all you do, and all your deputies, thank you for, you do an outstanding job. And I too have to commend the young men for today. I look forward to you coming and sitting right here beside me one day here on this County Commission. And you need anything from me, I will give you my contact information to reach out. How old are you? You're 18? You need to be applying for our summer apprenticeship job. I think that, we need to make sure he gets on, you apply for one of those positions. All right.
Commissioner Walker?
A week or so ago, I, I kept having headaches, and I'm not one to get headaches, and I had to stop and think, you know, why, why am I, what is wrong? And I realized it is all the heaviness and the bad news stories. Every time we turn on our computer or turn on, turn on our TV, and especially in Mississippi and Alabama and Tennessee, we had quite a run last week of tragedy, and it's heavy, right? And it weighs on us as we look at social media, as we watch TV, and I realized it was a stress headache from just the heaviness of the world and the darkness that's all around us. And so I am so thankful this week, as we are in the holiest weeks for Christianity, as we approach resurrection Sunday, this Sunday, my hope is not in this world, my hope is not in politics or in systems, my hope is not in ideas that we can come up with our finite mind, but my hope is in Jesus Christ, and I'm thankful this week that he is going to lift our burdens as we, again, approach resurrection Sunday. Thank you.
Commissioner Vice Chairman Sankey.
Commissioner Walker, I would let that be the last word because it'd be a good note to end on, but I do want to say that April is the month of the military child, and they're celebrating that on the 19th of April, and so the children of military personnel make sacrifices as well, moving all over the world to accompany their mothers and fathers as they serve the country. And so just be mindful of the fact that April is the month of the military child, April 19th is actually the day they celebrate, and hopefully we'll be able to do something here in this body. And I've, I've been in touch with Colonel Reiser out at Maxwell and the, the Educational Department, Department of Defense Education System, and once we get some approval, I'll share that with you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of how we might want to acknowledge of that particular day. Thank you.
Thank you. I always like to shout out to our employees. We saw today that the Sheriff's Department and how they have taken upon themselves to improve their education on their own time, and which improves the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, which improves the Montgomery County Commission. So thank you for that. We got so many great employees, and I appreciate all of y'all. I do want to shout out today just for two of our newer employees. Ken Ward is doing a great, great job, great addition, a bum beyond what we expected. And then my attorney sitting next to me, I'm so glad he sits next to me. We got attorney on both ends of the table now, so, so I moved him down here for a reason.
He's the man, he's the man.
Because Dan was on that end, and he didn't need, Dan don't need help. I need help. And so I'm so glad to have Michael down here and Ken, too. Thank y'all for, for all you do. Real quick, went to Washington last week. The one theme I brought back was, and Sharon Rose was with me, and was that we went to Washington unified, and that's not been the case in many, many Washington trips. But we went into each of our federal delegation's offices, we had one mission in pla, in place, we're on, on the same page, the same wavelength, and it was noticeable. So I think some really great things will come back from our ass from the federal. We did visit DOT, Federal DOT, we have not done that in the past, and we've also visited the Department of Energy. I've got some paperwork that I'm gonna pass along to each of my commissioners, starting with Vice Chairman Sankey, because there's a lot of stuff in there about weatherization of homes and how you can do that, so I'm gonna put that on your desk. If you would, just keep passing it along, and then at the end, I hope it ends up, please make sure, Regina, that you get this paperwork at the end, after each commissioner has a chance to look at it. So again, thank y'all for being here, Happy Easter, and with that, we are adjourned.
So move.
Oh, we gotta, oh, we gotta, I'm sorry, I jumped quick. I need a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. I could hit it twice.